Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. It is ten AM and all members of the court are present today. This meeting is called to order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the blessings of our lifetime. Lord, we today pause and we remember Judge Caraway. Father, we thank you for his life, his service to his community, Lord, his service to his state. Lord, for being a business owner in our city for many years, God, we thank you for how his life and Kaye and Bart has blessed our community. And Father, we pray your deepest and richest grace and blessings on them, Lord, as they the days ahead, Lord, as Judge Caraway has passed. And God, we just pray blessings over the family in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to your flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm going to skip down to item number seven, which is Consider Adoption of Resolution Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen in honor of the life of Judge Billy Bruce Caraway. Before I read the resolution, I'd like to ask Mrs. Caraway and Bart and your family, would y'all please come forward up to the podium? And before I read the resolution that's been prepared for adoption by Commissioners Court, I'll ask Laney Brown with Congressman Brian Babin's office to come forward. I believe she has something to say to you and a presentation to make to you as well. Ms. Brown?
Good morning. When we heard of Judge Caraway's passing, Judge McDaniel let me know right away and I called the congressman and he asked that I have a flag flown over the United States Capitol and they were not into it. So I have that to present to you and a certificate I'd like to read to you. It says, "The accompanying flag was flown over the United States Capitol on April eighth, two thousand and nineteen, in memory of Judge Billy Bruce Caraway, and presented to his family on August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, in recognition of a beloved husband, father, and grandfather. And on behalf of the people of Texas's thirty-six congressional districts, thank you for your many years dedicated service to the residents of Hardin County, and in recognition of a life built here." Brian Babin, a member of Congress. Thank you. That's enough.
Thank you, Laney. And be sure and pass on our thanks to Congressman Babin. Next, I'd like to have Kim Klein, please come forward with State Representative James White, House District Nineteen.
Representative White also would have liked to have done the same thing. He would have liked to be here this morning, but he does send his condolences. He also has a state flag that was flown over our Capitol in Texas. It says, "The State of Texas, House of Representatives. This certifies that the Texas flag herewith presented to Ms. Mary Kaye, Mistress Kaye Caraway and family by State Representative James White was flown at the Capitol of the sovereign state of Texas in honor of Judge Caraway's exceptional life as a father, husband, veteran, and community leader. In witness thereof and pursuant to the authority vested in me, I hereby undertake my hand and seal of office at Austin, Texas, this twelfth day of August, two thousand and nineteen."
Thank you, Kim. And please pass on our thanks to the representative.
Will do.
Next, I will read the resolution which will be presented to Commissioners Court for adoption here momentarily. Resolution honoring Judge Billy Bruce Caraway. Whereas on August eighth, two thousand and nineteen, Hardin County lost a dear friend and valued member of our community in the passing of longtime Hardin County Judge Billy Caraway. The Hardin County Commissioners Court wishes to recognize and honor Judge Caraway's life and his legacy of public service. And whereas after graduating from Silsby High School in nineteen fifty-nine, Judge Caraway attended Lamar University where he earned his Bachelor of Business Administration in nineteen sixty-three. While at Lamar, he ran Caraway Grocery just north of Silsby as a way to pay for college. And whereas in nineteen sixty-five, he began his career working for the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts, Bob Bullock. And in nineteen seventy-eight, he became an area manager with audit and compliance functions in fourteen offices staffed with more than four hundred employees. And whereas after his career in the State Comptroller's Office, Judge Caraway and his wife Kaye owned and managed the Lumber Company Restaurant, which I think many of us in here remember, and also the Red Cloud Water Park located in Silsby. And whereas Judge Billy Caraway served Hardin County well as tax assessor-collector from August first, nineteen ninety-two through December twenty-second, nineteen ninety-seven. Then he served Hardin County with honor, integrity, and dedication for sixteen years as county judge from January first, nineteen ninety-nine, to December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, when he retired. Whereas during his tenure as county judge, Hardin County suffered from major disasters as a result of Hurricanes Rita in two thousand and five and Ike in two thousand and eight, making landfall along the upper Texas coast. Judge Caraway demonstrated exceptional leadership and dedication to the citizens of Hardin County during the response and recovery, I'm sorry, the response to and recovery from these natural disasters. Now therefore be it resolved, the Hardin County Commissioners Court join with all current and past elected officials, county employees, and the citizens of Hardin County to celebrate the life of Judge Billy Bruce Caraway and express our heartfelt condolences to the entire Caraway family. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, I believe, is that right? And a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I want to thank you again for allowing Judge Caraway to spend so much time with Hardin County. We all know how much he loved this county and we all know how much he loved his family as well, and we thank you for allowing him and sharing him with us.
One more quick thing before you all. When Judge Caraway retired, he left this in the center drawer up there of the bench. And I called him probably about three months after I was here and told him, I said, "You left this, the next time you come by, please pick it up." And I set it in a place where I had left some other things for him, but he stopped by to visit with me one day and he told me, "You keep it." He said, "I want you to use it." So I have used it until this past Christmas, the girl's gotten me my own gavel. I thought I was gonna stay awhile, so it doesn't. I gavelled in the meeting today with this gavel and I want to pass it on to y'all and take it home.
Thank you so much.
It means a lot to me and I want it to be a lot. Yes, ma'am. Anything we can do, y'all let us know.
Thank you.
All right, we will go back up to item number three. Approve minutes of the July thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen special meeting and the July thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting as presented by Brandon Austin, County Treasurer.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pell. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, cancel all registered claims from the July thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting as requested and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, two hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty cents. For our cash report and general checking, we have one million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. In tax pool, we have ten million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, seventy-three dollars and seven cents for a total in cash funds of twelve million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and one cent. On the interest for the month of July, in the tax pool account, we earn twenty-three thousand, twelve dollars and eleven cents.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, consider request for authorization to open one new bank account to be used for analysis fees for non-interest-bearing bank accounts. Ms. McWilliams?
In a compass, they have a little bit different structure on how the earnings credits and analysis fees are done. This account will allow us to take the nine non-interest-bearing accounts, group them together. We have some earnings credits from the higher accounts that we're losing, so this will make it where we should. In May, it cost us four hundred dollars on analysis fees on these accounts. In June was like three sixty-seven. If we group them together, we'll have no fees. It'll offset the fees. So it should be like a yearly savings of approximately forty-five hundred dollars by doing it this way.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pell. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for looking out for us on that. Item number six, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Candace McKinney, Assistant County Officer. Ms. McKinney?
Expenditure in the Commission Court on August thirteenth today are three hundred and one thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Attached also is a list of additional bills in the amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents for a total expenditure and transfers of five hundred and forty-eight thousand, fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. The gross payroll for August fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen is five hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and eighteen cents. And the total transfer for the August payroll, the August fifteenth payroll is eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and thirty-one cents.
So where it says twenty-second, did we change it to fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Move the payables. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McKinney. Item number eight, authorization for county judge to sign interlocal agreement with the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles for the provision of equipment and consumables to administer motor vehicle title and registration transactions, and if approved, consider adoption of Resolution Twenty-seven Dash Nineteen, authorizing and approving execution of an interlocal agreement between the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles and Hardin County. This is a request made by Shirley Cook, Tax Assessor Collector.
Move it, please.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? Do you have anything you want to say?
This is a mandated or by the state. What happened was counties, all the counties had agreements through text doc, and this is just moving the agreement from text doc to text D and D.
And your agreement's already been looked at by the [inaudible].
It has been reviewed by county attorney.
It's not going to cost us any more money than we already...
No, sir.
Those are my main questions. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Item number nine, consider adoption of Resolution Twenty-eight Dash Nineteen supporting House Resolution Twenty-two Twenty, providing for coordination with action taken on the FAST Act and Interstate Fourteen Expansion and Improvement Act of two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Richard Clower is here. He's a consultant with Jasper Economic Development Corporation. Good morning, Mr. Clower, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Everybody has a copy of this. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you. I'm also a director of the Interstate Highway Fourteen Coalition, which is a statewide coalition for our effort to have Interstate Highway Fourteen constructed and authorize the full length, of which twenty-five miles has already been opened in the Fort Hood area in central Texas. Actually, this connects Fort Bliss and El Paso, Fort Hood in the central part of Texas, and then one ninety is the route, US Highway one ninety. It follows that route through Woodville, Jasper, on into Louisiana and Fort Polk. This effort is being really accelerated and emphasized by a bill that was introduced in the House, House Bill Two-Two-Two-Zero, by eleven congressmen, including Congressman Babin as the lead congressman introducing that. What is needed is a companion bill in the US Senate to go along with this bill that's in the House. The resolution that we've submitted is just a suggestion. There has been several all across the state resolutions in support already signed by various organizations supporting the Senate to proceed with a companion bill. The handout that I've given you has quite a bit of background information, a couple of samples of such resolutions that have been signed, one that's a generic type that's just for your suggestion to consider, then a copy of the House Bill Two-Two-Two-Zero, then two letters that were sent to Senator Cornyn and Senator Cruz on July the tenth by the I-14 Coalition. The last thing in that handout is the map prepared by the Coalition. Now, the yellow part of that map, starting where I-10 intersects US Highway one ninety in west Texas, that yellow part has been designated as a corridor for this interstate highway by Congress. That's already in effect. All the orange, including the main point that I'm here for today, are called spurs, US Highway ninety-six and US Highway sixty-nine, from Beaumont up to Woodville and up to Jasper. Those are key proposed highways. Of course, they already exist as US highways, but they would be upgraded to the standard of a highway system similar, or very similar, almost identical, to an interstate highway. Essentially, that would connect the port of Beaumont to Interstate Highway fourteen, which the major purpose of this highway is to connect these army forts for debarkation at the ports of Beaumont and the ports of Corpus Christi. Your consideration be greatly considered. It has some connection with the evacuation highway of Coalition Highway ninety-six, which nally all the county judges of that entire route from Beaumont all the way up to Tenahaw, connecting up with the existing Interstate Highway sixty-nine. That portion of that Highway ninety-six Coalition for evacuation purposes is a part of the same highway that would be this spur for Interstate Highway fourteen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clower.
Be glad to ask you any questions if you have any.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts to approve Resolution Twenty-eight Dash Nineteen. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
Item number ten, presentation of list of lots, nope, it's the list of lands and lots delinquent on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, for taxes of twenty-eighteen in Hardin County and requesting the court to execute a certificate of Commissioners Court for credit for the twenty-eighteen delinquent taxes shown thereon by Shirley Cook, Tax Assessor Collector.
Good morning. Again, this, I don't know why it's called List of Lands and Delinquents, but improvements, but that's what it's called. This is just, it's a formality that the Tax Assessor Collector requests credit for. This is the total that you have there in your packet showed according. It's left on the roll as of June thirtieth, when taxes make the delinquents.
What is the total delinquent amount?
The total delinquent amount is at the very bottom, the three, three million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, five, eight, two, sixty-seven. And that second page is the verification from our software provider that shows the delinquent tax roll, basically what it is. If you have this...
Okay, I got you. Thank you. Now, that's for all entities. The part for Hardin County is nine hundred and forty thousand...
That's correct.
Nine hundred and forty thousand. Did I say eight hundred and twenty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No good.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pell. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven, discussion of possible action regarding a refund exceeding the five hundred dollar limit, account number nine four nine eight eight for tax year two thousand and fourteen, and account number nine four nine eight nine for tax year two thousand and fourteen. Ms. Cook?
This refund was an account that apparently was on the roll in two thousand and fourteen. There were two accounts, same owner. You should have copies of the ARB appraisal review board made the decision to delete that account for two thousand and fourteen. It's actually a well with all the information that we have. So that's the request, approval for a refund.
I move to approve the refund.
Second.
Have a motion by the chair and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Cook. Item number twelve, authorization for county judge to sign agreement with Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission to participate in the regional, excuse me, emergency notification project utilizing Blackboard Connect. This is a request made by the Emergency Management Coordinator, Aaron Tupper. And Mr. Tupper, this is a renewal and we're switching providers again, is that right?
Yes.
So we're going from Swift Reach back to Blackboard?
Yes, sir.
And there's no money involved for the county?
No. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, discussion of possible action regarding request for approval to apply for the Helping Heroes Grant two thousand and nineteen funded by Flint Hills Resources. Funds not to exceed the amount of ten thousand dollars and to be implemented in the two thousand and twenty for technology upgrades for the sheriff's office. No cash or any kind matches required for this grant. Request by Aaron Tupper, Emergency Management Coordinator.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. If we are awarded that grant, will the funds come in? Will it be in the next budget year?
Uh, yes.
Oh, good deal. Thank you. Item number fourteen, discussion of possible action on request to apply for grant from West Rock Company for technology upgrades within the sheriff's office. Funds not to exceed the amount of ten thousand dollars and no cash or any kind matches required for this grant. This is a request made by Sheriff Davis.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, discussion of possible action regarding proposal received by E-Three Integral Solutions Incorporated concerning energy efficiency and facility improvements, and if the court approves to proceed with the project, authorization for county judge to sign project development agreement between Hardin County and E-Three Integral Solutions Incorporated, doing business as Integral Solutions, a Texas corporation. At our last meeting, at our last meeting, we had a presentation by E-Three. They are the firm that was selected by the committee regarding upgrades and improvements to primary concerns, our AC system and lighting throughout the courthouse and the jail. Future would also be maybe to improve some plumbing, but right now our main concerns are what the presentation was about, which was the HVAC and the lighting system. We need to give the firm some type of answer, and it was not on the last agenda to take any action. My recommendation is that we move forward with allowing them to, we would sign this agreement that would allow them to then have a thorough inspection, I guess is what we would call it.
Final design, you're allowing to actually design it so that people can bid on it.
And that will allow us to get firm bids on what it would take to do the work that we're hoping and that we know that needs to be done. As Jared informed us last time, it's going to happen. We just would like to plan for it rather than have to react to it after we have a major failure of the HVAC system. What that means as far as money, the contract is for around thirty-six thousand, is that correct?
That's correct.
That would allow the firm to go ahead and complete the survey. A thorough engineering study would be done of the courthouse and the jail, provide us with a design plan, and then allow them to go out for bids from contractors, which I anticipate would happen sometime toward the end of the year. We would end up with a plan, a design, and how much it would cost the county to go forward with repairs.
That's correct. Yes, December, end of November, somewhere around that, yes.
Then at that time, that's when we would decide when and if and how we would move forward with paying for those repairs. So what we would be committed to right now would be to pay the thirty-six thousand dollars, and we could do that out of the fiscal year twenty budget instead of the existing budget to get a design plan in place. At the December-January timeframe, once they presented us with the design and the cost to make the repairs and install the LED lighting system that was presented to us at the last meeting, we could determine whether or not we're able to afford going forward at that time, or we at least have a plan for the future that we can try to do at some point in time in the future. One thing that we've talked about, I talked with, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kirkendall about, is trying to pay off the jail certificate of obligation. It pays off in twenty-two, I believe. Trying to pay it off early, but after talking with Angela, that would be nearly a million dollars we'd have to come up with next year to pay it off early, so that's really not a, an option. But we can look at other options and we have some time to think about that between now and say January, when we, when we know better about what that project would entail. That's my recommendation that we go ahead and move forward that allows us to get an engineering study and design done and to know exactly what it's going to cost us as of December, January to go forward with repairs.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Judge, I think the presentation that the company made was great, and also what she had to say, I'd go along with. One thing I think we definitely need to keep in mind is, when it comes to these projects, eventually we're going to have to do something. Like you said, maybe it's better to do it now than have to wait, you know, in case of emergency. But things we have to keep in consideration is each, each little bitty thing adds up. And next year, whenever it comes, budget time, we're going to be under a different set of rules as far as our rollback tax rate. So that's something we have to keep in mind, too. And I'm sure everybody's aware of that, but I'll be in agreement with going along with this, and hopefully we can get this taken care of to where, like you said, we can come up with something to where it won't be such a burden on the county as far as going forward, I bet.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Cook. Do you have something as well? Commissioner Kirkendall?
I'm reluctant to finance a one point eight million dollar project with currently what we have financed, so if there's just some type of integrated system, we could do maybe over four, five year period, you know, you guys would know because y'all are doing the study. But I'd be reluctant to, to be in favor of financing another huge project.
And again, that's a decision that I think we can make right after the first of the year. Is that correct?
Yes.
So once the options are presented to us, after they've got the engineering study done, then that's when we decide how and when to move forward with repairs and upgrade. Any other comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number sixteen, consider authorization for county judge to sign interlocal agreement with the regional public defender for capital cases. This is a renewal. This is for any capital murder trials that have to be heard in Hardin County. I believe the amount went down about two thousand dollars from last year to this year, and Mrs. Walton and Mr. Sheffield had both signed off on the agreement.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number seventeen, results in awarding the bids for purchase of Roden Bridge materials and emulsions for all Roden Bridge precincts. Misty Sam's Purchasing Agent. Good morning.
Miss Sam, this looks pretty thick here. You want to just read the low bids?
Yes, sir. Bids were opened on August second, two thousand and nineteen, at two PM in the purchasing department front office. Myself, Erica Singletary, and Stacy Eckert were present. The first item was Seal Coat Aggregate. It looks like that Vulcan maybe has quoted a different product, a comparable product, so I didn't mark that one for y'all. Gulf Coast at the plant is sixty-five dollars a ton, and delivered is seventy-three, eighty a ton. And then Vulcan has another product, LRA Pre Coat, at the plant, twenty-three dollars a ton, and delivered eighty-seven, ninety-two a ton.
What's the pleasure of the court on Seal Coat Aggregate?
We're going to unleash one individually, Judge.
Well, we weren't, but I think because there's maybe a discrepancy on the different types of materials that were quoted by the two vendors, maybe that's why we should go ahead and nail this one.
Yeah, I think, I think on this, well, Gulf Coast is quoting is not a pre coat, and so I think you may have like a scenario where it's not apples for apples if we want to. And so I think they're really separate items, Judge.
Well, it looks like Gulf Coast did a Seal Coat Aggregate, but Vulcan did a pre coat.
Right, so the pre coat is the aggregate prior to getting mixed for your, your seal coat. It's a coating on it that helps it bond even better. It's a preferred bonding, but it doesn't look like they're charging you for the whole seal coat. It looks like this is step A, where the Seal Coat Aggregate, getting ready to be put on the road is step B.
So we would need to go with Gulf Coast because they did what was...
Yes.
Okay.
And the question about Vulcan was, there's a tremendous difference between the plant and delivered. Well, because you're only ordering the pre coat. It's the pre coated rock. It's not the, there's, there's different sizes and different stages of pre coat, and the pre coated rock is actually a better rock, but it's not the final product. It's the like, it's the raw ingredient to the final product.
So, they're not bidding by the full specs?
Correct.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense to me.
All right, so we'll go with Gulf Coast on that one?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr.?
Yes, sir. Next item is hot mix asphaltic concrete pavement. LD construction is sixty dollars at the plant, and sixty-one seventy-five delivered, and Vulcan also bids sixty dollars at the plant. So, do you wanna award both of those at the plant, and, I'm sorry, both of those at the plant, and then delivered for LD construction?
That's the pleasure of the court?
Yes.
Okay, so do we need to give a one and two? One to LD and two to Vulcan?
On the plant.
And then, on delivered, it would be LD construction?
Yes, sir. Next one is hot mix cold lay asphaltic concrete pavement. Gulf Coast at the plant for sixty-nine fifty, and delivered for seventy-five seventy-five. Limestone baser equivalent road material, Vulcan materials, at the plant, twenty-one fifty, delivered twenty-eight dollars. Slag coat products, cat excavation and construction, at the plant, twenty-five fifty, delivered thirty-two fifty. Cover stone, knife river at the plant, thirty-seven dollars, and delivered forty dollars. Grade four and three-eighths washed pea gravel. Arcosa at the plant for thirty dollars a ton, and cat excavation at the plant, I'm sorry, delivered for forty-two fifty. Field dirt, cat excavation for four-fifty a cubic yard, and delivered nine-fifty a cubic yard. Pine ridge sand, cat for four-fifty a cubic yard, delivered, I'm sorry, at the plant, four-fifty, and delivered at nine-fifty a cubic yard. Rye base, Arcosa at the plant for twelve dollars a ton, and they did not provide a delivered price. Bahama base, no bid. Rapid road repair, Gulf Coast for eighty-seven seventy-five, at the plant, delivered for ninety-two seventy-five. One-inch washed limestone, Vulcan materials, twenty-eight fifty a ton, at the plant, and delivered thirty-five dollars a ton. Crushed concrete, knife river at the plant is nineteen dollars a ton, and Gulf River, I'm sorry, Gulf Coast, delivered twenty-six twenty-five a ton. And concrete stabilized sand, the five sacks, five sacks per cubic yard is Martin Marietta, forty-three dollars a ton, and delivered fifty-two. And then knife river quoted one, one-point-five sacks per cubic yard, and that one's twenty-four at the plant, and delivered thirty-one dollars. If you would consider doing both of them, I don't know which one to mark. Y'all used the one and a half sack?
Five sacks.
Five sacks.
Yeah, I don't know why they quoted one and a half when you asked for five.
So, that'll be awarded to Martin Marietta?
Yes.
Yeah, five sacks are what we, that I use.
Yep, same.
The next one is OPIF forty-two aggregate base, no bid, and X-Seal five-fifty SNS supplies, at the plant, eighteen ninety-five a gallon, delivered twenty dollars a gallon, labor to install is one eighty-six.
Question, when is this gonna go into effect? I've got three jobs lined up already for transportation with one vendor who will no longer be the vendor. Do I need to redo that?
August twenty-seventh, is it gonna be before then?
It'll be next week. Yeah, we're doing it next week, so, yeah. Okay.
What about page six?
Sir?
Page six, you got one more item in this slide?
I think that was an extra one, but sometimes they just provide other materials, and I listed them there, but that wasn't, we didn't provide specs for that one.
Thank you.
Short one to emulsion. Bids were open on August second, two thousand and nineteen, at two P.M. in the purchasing department front office. Myself, Erica Singletary were present. Emulsified asphalt, SS one, CRS two, CRS two H. Cleveland asphalt at one ninety-five a gallon, at the plant, delivered two oh eight a gallon. Asphalt item three hundred, AC ten. Martin asphalt at the plant, one ninety-eight a gallon, delivered two ten a gallon. Road oil, MC eight hundred.
On the, on the, we've always awarded to Cleveland to keep our trucks out of Houston, but if we could just, as a court, decide on that?
So, back to item B?
Yes, sir.
Martin asphalt is a low bid, but they're in Houston?
Yes.
Okay. So, is it the pleasure of the court to award to Cleveland asphalt at two eighty a gallon?
Just at the plant? They're still under?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Just at the plant. Or maybe do a one and a two?
So, you'll do one for Cleveland asphalt and two for Martin asphalt?
Yes, sir.
Is that the consensus of the court?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that just for plant?
Yes, sir.
That's the plant for Cleveland and delivered for Martin asphalt, yeah.
So, now we're on item B, is that right?
C.
C, road oil, MC eight hundred.
That one is Martin asphalt for two sixty a gallon, and delivered two seventy-two a gallon. That is also in Houston. Do you wanna award?
Do it the same way as you did the last one?
Number one and two.
Yeah, do it the same way.
On item C, number one will be Cleveland asphalt at the plant, and number two will be Martin asphalt delivered. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Item D is AES three hundred, Martin asphalt, two ten a gallon at the plant, delivered two twenty-two a gallon. Do you wanna do the same for this one?
Please. So, number one will be Cleveland at the plant, and number two will be Martin delivered.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Prime coat, AEP. There was a new vendor that quoted an alternative product, the Lucky Seven. I don't know if you all know anything about that. If, if it meets specs, or I couldn't tell. Cleveland asphalt at the plant was two fifteen, and plant, I'm sorry, and delivered is two thirty a gallon. So, they would be the apparent low with?
Where is Mott, Texas?
That's where it lasts.
I don't know.
I know the squared emulsions guys, and they're really, really good at doing a lot of work in Chambers County, so it may be good just to have it as an option. I haven't ever used it, but they do quite a lot of work over in Chambers.
How many items did they bid on?
Two.
Yes, sir.
That's real low. I guess they're trying to get the foot in the door or something on it.
Remember that George, that Mr. Sellar?
It's Mott, it's up close to Waco, isn't it?
He's, he worked in Mott.
Another place called Elm Mott, Texas.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yeah, that's at Waco. Our Mott.
It's away from here.
Angelina County.
Angelina County, up close to Lufkin there.
I would say leave them as an alternate and go with the, uh...
Cleveland?
Yes, sir.
Cleveland would be one, and squared emulsions would be two?
That's what I'd say.
Yes, sir.
It was the same on the next tackle?
Yes, sir.
So, one will be Cleveland asphalt on tackle?
Martin's lower.
Actually, it'll be Martin.
I'm sorry. One would be Martin asphalt, and two would be squared emulsions, is that correct?
Yeah, but normally, we pick up our tackle in Cleveland, just to keep our trucks off the freeways in Houston.
Yeah.
That's whatever the pleasure of the court is.
They're higher on this, this, uh, emulsion is higher, so I would say on that one, uh, one is Martin, two is Cleveland at the plant. I, I'm sorry, vice versa. One is Cleveland at the plant, and two would be Martin.
Martin delivered?
Yes.
And we're gonna do a three for squared emulsions?
Yes.
All right, so one will be Cleveland asphalt at the plant, two will be Martin asphalt at, delivered, and three will be squared emulsions. And that's for?
Tackle.
Tackle, RC two fifty.
The next item is MC thirty. Martin asphalt at the plant, two seventy gallon, delivered two eighty-two a gallon. Do you wanna award Cleveland at the plant on that one also?
Mm-hmm, same thing. Chris?
Yes.
Do the same thing on G?
Yes, sir.
So, one will be Cleveland asphalt at the plant, and two, Martin asphalt delivered.
Yes, sir.
And the last item is cracked fuel oil. Brown and brown asphalt at the plant, five hundred and sixty-five dollars a ton, and delivered five eighty a ton.
I'm gonna award the bid as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by the chair and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, results in awarding the bids for purchase of road and bridge, I'm sorry. Item eighteen, results in awarding the bids received for overlaying approximately one thousand, three hundred and seventy feet on Pine Knott Lane located in precinct two. Miss Sims?
Bids were open on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, at two P.M. in the purchasing department front office. Myself, I'm sorry, I wasn't there. Stacy Eckert, Erica Singletary, and John Arsenault, and someone from Gulf Coast were present. The first bid was CMM Construction at three fifty a square yard, LD Construction at three sixty-five a square yard, and Gulf Coast at seven eighty a square yard. So, the apparent is CMM.
Please approve CMM.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pell to approve CMM. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nineteen, results in awarding the bids received for overlaying approximately four-tenths of a mile on Maury, Murray, Jordan Road, nine-tenths of a mile on Gusher Road, and nine-tenths of a mile on Crestwood Drive, all located in precinct three. Miss Sims?
Bids were opened on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, at two P.M. Stacy Eckert, Erica Singletary, John Arsenault, and someone from Gulf Coast were present. CMM Construction is two forty a square yard, LD Construction, two fifty-five a square yard, and Gulf Coast at two sixty a square yard.
Look at the difference in the bid on Gulf Coast on most of those. They must've learned something when they were, when they were first open.
I was thinking the same.
Commissioner Pell, you have a motion on that?
Yeah, it's the reason, the other one, Gulf Coast, the highest, very little, very short road.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I move we accept a low bid to CMM.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Cooper to accept the bid from, award the bid to CMM. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty, authorization for county judge to sign courthouse dome mural project contract for services between Hardin County and Suzanne Sellers, furnished and installed murals depicting Hardin County history in the courthouse dome.
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Misty, I think you told me that Rebecca's already reviewed that agreement, is that correct? Item number twenty-one, setting of two public hearings regarding the proposed tax rate for the year two thousand and nineteen. I propose that our first public hearing will be on August twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, at one-thirty P.M., and our second public hearing will be on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, at nine-thirty A.M. One note on that is that we also have a public hearing with the district clerk about preservation fees, our preservation program at nine forty-five A.M. If the tax rate public hearing runs over, we'll start the public hearing on the preservation fees with the district clerk immediately following the tax rate.